All right, we're going to get started. Good morning. Welcome to the Health, Environment and Tech Committee meeting. My name is Mark Conway. I am subbing in for Chairman Craig today. She's feeling a little under the weather. I represent the 4th District. I've got Councilwoman Porter representing the 10th District, and I've got Councilman Dorsey representing the 3rd District in attendance. Representing the Office of the President, I've got President Lewis, and Tyler Chanelle representing the Administration. Before we get started, please take a moment to silence your phones, and we'll jump right into it. We have actually two hearings today. The first is going to be Council Resolution 23-021R, informational hearing on medical waste incinerators. And the second will be a quick voting session that we may pause the initial hearing just to get it out the door. And that is going to be a voting session on Council Bill 23-0465, tree removal on city property permits and procedure. So for the first hearing today, Council Resolution 23-021R, informational hearing, medical waste incinerators for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Baltimore Health Department, the Baltimore City Hospitals, institutions that make use of medical waste incinerators in Baltimore City, and any other relevant stakeholders to discuss: one, which local hospitals send waste to medical incinerators in Baltimore City, and which local hospitals do not? Two, what if any oversight mechanisms these hospitals have in place over their hazardous waste disposal service contracts? Three, the sustainability and environmental justice components local hospitals have made, and how those commitments may conflict with service contracts the hospitals have with medical waste incineration companies that have long histories of environmental violations? And four, what hospitals intend to do in the immediate future to mitigate the negative effects of their medical waste disposal on Baltimore's communities? I'm going to turn it over to sponsor, Councilwoman Porter, to give us some opening remarks.
Thank you. Medical waste incineration, while often promoted as a safe solution for disposing hazardous materials, is a practice veiled in danger. The toxic emissions released during the incineration process contain a cocktail of harmful substances, including dioxins, heavy metals, and other carcinogens. For the record, these pollutants do not dissipate into thin air. Instead, they permeate our environment, infiltrating the very air we breathe and the water that we drink. While the detrimental effects of incineration are not always top of mind for a vast majority of our city residents and some of my colleagues, this is, in fact, a harsh reality for the frontline communities of Curtis Bay, Brooklyn, and their neighbors across South Baltimore. Not only is South Baltimore home to vibrant communities and passionate residents, it is home to one of the largest medical waste incinerators in the United States. As local elected officials, we have a responsibility to maintain the public health and safety of our constituents. However, in this case, it is imperative that we call on our partners within the local, state, and federal delegation to address the repeated environmental injustices under their purview. Statistically, six South Baltimore communities rank in the top 3% of the state for environmental burden using the Maryland Department of the Environment screening tool. No community deserves to be the sacrifice zone, and we must acknowledge the cumulative air pollution burden that is diminishing the basic quality of life for the people of South Baltimore. I applaud, most importantly, Tiffany Thomas for bringing this to my attention and being steadfast in sharing the videos and evidence of environmental pollution from this harmful medical waste incinerator within Curtis Bay. Also thank the residents of Curtis Bay that are here today to share their advocacy, bravery, and continued resilience as an environmental justice community. And I hope that this cycle of abuse is not their fight alone. And during today's hearing, even though it is not under the jurisdiction of the City of Baltimore, I hope that my colleagues stand in solidarity with the communities of Curtis Bay and all those in South Baltimore to show that they are not in this fight alone. And the change in environmental standards, waste management practices, and how we shield our neighbors from environmental harm will be top of mind as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll now hear from our city agencies. First, starting off with the Department of Public Works.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Porter, and Councilman Dorsey. Marcia Collins, representing the Department of Public Works at this hearing. We submitted a report to the committee outlining some of the areas in which a medical waste incinerator is permitted through the state of Maryland, and some of the conditions under which those can be done and under which they exercise their regulations. For medical waste, special medical waste is a separate category. It is not the same as hazardous waste, and it is usually governed by state by state through laws and regulations. There are some OSHA concerns regarding people who handle and/or transport these materials and NIH guidelines, but for the most part, it's state law and regulations that govern over these facilities. We, in DPW, do not have any reporting responsibilities for these facilities. We do not have any regulatory control over these facilities. We did list in our most recent 10-year solid waste management plan four facilities that were listed within our borders who handle or transport hazardous waste, not, I'm sorry, special medical waste. We listed them in our report, and that was the Triumvirate Medical Waste Transfer Station, Stericycle, Daniel Sharp Smart, and the Curtis Bay Energy Facility, also known as Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services. Our estimates in that report said there are about 5,700 tons of medical waste that's generated within the borders of the city. However, the facility of concern that, as I understand it, the Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services accept materials outside of our borders. Our own city Quarantine Road landfill does not accept any medical waste. So we offer this up just as an informational purposes to the committee, and would happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Next up, we have the Department of Finance.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Laura Larson, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We submitted a response in advance of the hearing talking about how these costs are reflected in the city's budget. We stand by the response that we submitted. It is worth noting, in fiscal '23, we had three departments, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Health Department, that had contracts with a biomedical waste service. The total amount spent on these contracts was just over $34,000 across those three agencies. And, but again, we can only speak to the contractual relationship with this vendor. We don't have, we would defer to the agencies regarding the more operational nature of how these contracts are being used.
Thank you. Any questions for our agencies? Councilwoman.
This question is, I didn't hear from the Health Department. I think that was the last one.
Thank you. Thank you. Health Department. Please, go ahead.
Do we know what the plume size is for medical waste incinerators or incinerators in general, or this particular medical waste incinerator? Yeah, when you burn things, stuff goes up in the air. And what goes up must come down. And it comes down.
Make sure you turn the microphone.
We will speak a little bit to that question whenever we present some of the imagery.
Great, thank you.
Visible black smoke.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to the Health Department before we go to our panel.
Thank you. Good morning, all of our esteemed councilmembers and sponsor, Councilwoman Porter. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director with the Baltimore City Health Department. We also submitted an agency report in response to this resolution, but for everyone here who may have not read the report, I'm happy to just sort of summarize what was in there. So as my colleague from DPW shared, city agencies are not privy to the questions regarding hospitals and their contracts. Regulation and oversight of incinerators, including incinerators that accept medical waste, falls under the purview of the state, as does most environmental issues in general. As my colleague shared, medical waste, or sometimes it's referred to as special medical waste, is defined by Maryland Department of Health Regulations in Colmar, in the Code of Maryland Regulations. They also define the requirements for the handling, treatment, and disposal of special medical waste. And then enforcement of these requirements also rests with the state jointly between the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland Department of the Environment. BCHD does, we do a lot of things, but air quality monitoring and control is not one of them. That's a really highly specialized field. We do have a Bureau of Environmental Health, but that handles licensing and inspection and routine investigations of food service establishments and other facilities such as tattoo parlors, swimming pools, and spas. And then they also investigate complaints related to certain suspected health hazards. And then they also do plan review for facilities who are under new ownership. So while environmental health is in the name, it's not necessarily what everyone here might think of when they think environmental health. We do have some programming that is tangentially related to air. Specifically, we have a childhood asthma program, but that's more focused on helping families control their children's asthma, in part through identifying potential triggers inside their homes. So we're more than happy to be here and answer whatever questions we can. I understand that this is a very large concern for a lot of Baltimore City residents, but we may not be able to answer all the questions that you might have. Happy to be here. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter.
I did have a question. This is mainly for the Law Department. So Title VIII of the Baltimore City Health Code, specifically geared towards air pollution. And I wanted to kind of go through some of the Commissioner's powers. I wanted to really ask, has the Commissioner of Health for the City of Baltimore ever surveyed the air quality or air monitoring within the South Baltimore communities?
I would not know the answer to that question. I would imagine the Health Department would know if they surveyed the air or not.
Okay. Has that ever happened?
I don't know. I would doubt it, but I don't know.
Thank you. So it says here, section, it says here in Title VIII, Section 102, "The Commissioner's Powers." "The Commissioner of Health may undertake surveys, investigation, and studies alike activities to determine the condition of air in the city and how best to improve that condition." Has that been adopted or even executed by the Commissioner of Health ever?
I actually have a question for the Law Department in response to that question. So I've been engaging with the Law Department around some, an ordinance that was passed in 2019 that, as I understand it, sort of attempted to put more stringent local requirements in place, but then Bresco took the city to court regarding that. And then subsequently, some of those requirements were then struck. Colleagues in the Law Department, do you know if this was part? I have to admit, Councilwoman, I don't know the section that you're referring to.
Sure.
So I'm asking the Law Department if they know if that was part of the section that was subsequently struck down.
So the case that Julia is referring to actually found that the entire Clean Air Act that was enacted by the City Council, which called for more stringent air quality standards, was unconstitutional, well, maybe not unconstitutional, but preempted by state law. So state has the sole authority, basically, under this court decision to legislate with respect to clean air.
Even if it's referenced in our city charter and code?
Yes, so the state law would preempt our city charter.
Okay. The next one, next question I have is Section, no, Title VIII, Section 102, Subsection B, Setting Emission Standards. So in the Health Code, it says, "In the rules and regulations that the Commission adopts under Section 2, 106 of this article, the Commissioner may set emission standards and adopt procedures for implementing and enforcing those standards." Has the City Health Department ever been able to develop, adapt, or even execute those emission standards as set by the code?
I believe that's part of the same.
It is.
So, no.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, we're going to move on to our panel. We'll have a presentation from Doctors Heaney and Thomas, both from the South Baltimore Community Land Trust in partnership with the Johns Hopkins School of Public Health. And as you guys speak up, just make sure you state your name for the record, so we've got it down.
All right. Good morning, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Conway, Councilman Dorsey. Thank you all for calling this very important hearing. And today, I am Dr. Melanie Thomas, South Baltimore Community Land Trust, and also on the board of the Curtis Bay Community Association. And we are here to just share some of the data as we looked at a history of violations and just incidences at this facility, the medical waste facility.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for that introduction, and thank you for having us here today. I'm Dr. Chris Heaney, and I'm here from the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. And working in collaboration with our colleagues at the South Baltimore Community Land Trust, we were asked to perform a data analysis of the visual images that were collected around this facility. So we'll be prepared to present on that together.
Thank you. All right. So as we heard, this is the largest medical waste incinerator in the country. A majority of the waste comes from out of state. 76% is imported from out of state to be burned here in South Baltimore, a community that is already overburdened by toxic pollution from various companies. There's a long history of violations that we're going to look at and just really explore what the facility and the history and the patterns that we've seen thus far, and why we're here today. Next slide, please. So again, we said that 76% of the waste is from out of state, and this map just shows you some of the areas and the cities that the waste is coming from. All right, so let's go back in history, right? So 1989, not that long ago, South Baltimore residents opposed the medical waste incinerator, but the city approved. Councilman Murray, he warns that the development will attract an even greater concentration of polluting development in South Baltimore. Again, it was passed. Now, as Councilwoman stated in her remarks earlier, Curtis Bay and our area is ranked the highest in the state for environmental burden. This is not, this is not an accident. In 1994, the incinerator was caught illegally importing out-of-state waste. The Medical Waste Associates plant operator, they said that the plant has become so corroded that it is in danger of collapse. They filed for bankruptcy after losing most of its hospital customers and having to pay out thousands of dollars to state pollution charges. So remember what I just said and what we just shared, that was in 1994. 1997, the incinerator asked Baltimore City Council to legalize importing medical waste, a sanction that they just got fined for, for illegally importing medical waste. And now they approach City Council to approve them importing medical waste from as far as 250 miles away. And I don't think I said it earlier, but waste, medical waste comes as far from Canada to our city. Okay? And this very important quote from Council President Lawrence Bell, it said, "I do not believe the health of our citizens is something that should be traded away to accommodate business. Let other cities take care of their own waste." This other quote was really profound. It was by a longtime resident in Brooklyn Park, which is outside Anarundale County. So they said, "If history is an indication, that just means that we'll be back here to fight another battle in a few years. It's unbelievable that anyone, anybody, would go along with this when they know of the high pollutants and cancer rates in our area." This quote was in 1997. It is now 2024, and we are back here again fighting for this same issue. From 2004 to 2005, the incinerator reported violations of mercury emissions 400 times in two years. There was a quote by the President of Concerned Citizens for a Better Brooklyn, allowing the Phoenix Services, that was the owner at that time, "To continue to emit pollution is like letting me dump garbage on my neighbor's lawn, except that in Phoenix's case, the pollution is toxic." Also that year, between this year, Johns Hopkins Hospital, they sued the owner, the current owner of the medical waste facility at that time, and successfully ended their contract for failure to pick up the waste on time. Also during this time span, Councilwoman, Councilman Ed Riesinger attempted to ban out-of-state medical waste. Now, here we are, in 2019 to present. We learned in October of 2023 that Maryland announced the largest environmental penalty against the facility, right? The reason we're here today. The incinerator pled guilty to 40 criminal and environmental charges, but continues to violate. And again, as we're getting to the community monitoring piece, we'll see some of the documented footage that community residents and partners and just members, concerned members, have taken videos and pictures of some of these evidence of black smoke. Following, sorry, following our report, as you can see, the first recorded video was on January 26th in 2024. And that video we'll watch shortly, but I just want you to notice the dates and the pattern. So the state issued and filed a new lawsuit against the medical waste incinerator on March 14th. Okay? Just before that, one day before, and three days after, there's still evidence of black smoke around the facility. And these images are from the community monitoring, either cellphone cameras or trail cam videos that our community has installed in partnership with our partners at Johns Hopkins. Next slide, please. I think this is the video. Go back one. And this image is just what residents continue to see on a almost day-to-day basis in our community from this facility. Now, we'll turn it over to Dr. Heaney for him to share some of the data that we've been able to find.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Thomas. Well, as Dr. Thomas mentioned, the video we just saw was actually the end of a day-long tour that the South Baltimore Community Land Trust had hosted, myself and a group of students from a course that I teach at the Bloomberg School of Public Health in the third term, where we learn of the concerns in the community and then the teaching opportunities for the research trainees and students to develop responses to those concerns. And this was the last stop on the tour, and we were standing there. And then we see the emissions of the dark smoke plumes, which caught us by surprise, and we didn't know what it was at first. But it led to some ideas that we could possibly, if we could coordinate and set up a way to systematically, routinely collect imagery, could we count and tabulate the number of events that are occurring at this facility? So what I'll present today is a result of that collaboration with the South Baltimore Community Land Trust. So what we do is we identify quite affordable, cheap trail cameras that you might use if you're a naturalist or a hunter in order to track the patterns of deer or other wildlife. And you can program them to collect an image automatically every 30 seconds, every minute. You can also set them to be motion activated in their day vision and night vision as well. So we set up these trail cameras starting on February 21st to collect an image, still image photo, every 30 seconds. And then we can stitch those images together. We collected about 65,000 images in total between February 21st and March 13th. And today, I'm going to present an initial preliminary analysis of just the daytime events. Okay? So this is what we can identify and classify most easily that are recognizable as dark black smoke plumes that are emitting from the facility. So when we perform this analysis, we create a time lapse. That's the video that's auto-playing on the left here. This covers an event that's roughly about a little bit over an hour in duration, so the video plays very fast. But the time that's unfolding is these 30-second intervals stitched into a time lapse. Okay? So in total, the daytime portions of this are about 250 hours of footage that we reviewed between February 21st and March 13th. This resulted in us being able to classify and identify 27 daytime black smoke emission events during this time period. It's about 21 days of observation. We observed 27 black smoke events during the day. Their average duration was about 40 minutes. The variance or the range of the level of precision that we have around this is about 46 minutes. So they're ranging from short, about a minute, to longer than the average of 40 minutes, to around two hours and 16 minutes was the longest event that we observed. The total smoke emissions time represented by these 27 daytime events was 17 hours and 32 minutes of black smoke events that were visible. On average, there was a little bit over one event per day, 1.17 events per day during the period of the observation. So this camera-based visual observation method that we're performing, it's quite, it's quite nimble. It's quite adaptable. It falls into the category of what we can do as community science, citizen science in partnership with residents and neighborhoods to take the power of data into their own hands, to observe the conditions in their neighborhood. And this approach suggests that these black smoke events occur quite frequently during the daytime. We still need to analyze the nighttime images, and would be happy to come back and report on that at a later time. So there are public health implications of these visible black smoke events in terms of the local community air pollution burden. These images, as we submitted them for informational purposes today, can be reviewed. We've also shared them with the Maryland Department of the Environment. As was referenced earlier, it can give a sense of the frequency, the duration, and the dispersion patterns of these from the field of view of the community observations with the trail camera. But the context is, is that we know that medical waste incineration has adverse health and environmental impacts. And the American Public Health Association, early during the pandemic, came out with a policy statement calling attention to the disproportionate adverse health and environmental justice concerns of medical waste and its incineration. Also, taking into context, these plumes are information which we can submit in addition to the permit violations that have been reported recently for hydrogen chloride, carbon monoxide, and particulate matter at this facility. And with this, I'll hand it back over to my esteemed colleague, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. Heaney. Can you go back to the slide really quick? One more? I want to call out the numbers. So within a 21-day period, we've observed just the daytime, 27 daytime events on average, you know, and some lasting as long as over two hours. If this isn't an indication of an issue, I don't know what is. Okay. We can proceed back to where we are. I just really want us to take time to internal- I just really want us to, to take time to internalize this stuff. I think you touched on that one. Next slide. Thank you. This quote was by former mayor Curtis Schmo. And he says, "Some of my public statements were viewed as heartless, and that was deliberate. The strategy and message had been decided. I didn't want to talk about the environmental dangers or the impact on children. If we did that, it would open us up to conversations about the impact of the medical waste incinerator and where there were pockets of statistical trouble or lead poisoning." Pardon?
I believe the question was, what was the context for that quote?
The quote was an interview with a dissertation student, and we'll provide the references. It's referenced at the bottom and should be in the presentation as well for review. You're welcome. So moving forward, what we really want to take a look at is, you know, again, breaking the cycle of environmental injustice in our communities. The pollution, pollution cannot be contained. So it's not just, although the facility is in Curtis Bay, it's not just concentrated to Curtis Bay, as we saw a quote from the Brooklyn Park resident in Anarundale County. Others are being impacted, and this issue is one that affects everyone. We saw, and I reported earlier, historically, Johns Hopkins successfully ended a contract, you know, before Johns Hopkins Hospital. We are calling on the hospitals to end their contracts with the waste incinerator. City council looking at how they can ban out-of-state medical waste. It was done before, right? It was attempted before. Now we have more evidence? We shouldn't have to have more evidence, right? But we have it. And we are here really, this is a state of emergency. And our communities, we cannot continue to have these injustices and these violations just because it's been allowed before. We can't continue to turn a blind eye to what residents are calling for. 1997, they said, "Look, if history has a pattern, we'll be back here," and we are back here again. And this is, I don't know what more evidence we need to really hold violators accountable. What the pattern showed is that no matter who was owning or operating the facility, they were still violating. So there was always a change in ownership, and there are still violations. With the recent fine where the company pled guilty, it switched hands, new operator, still violating. Three days after another lawsuit filed, there's still evidence of violations. So the community, we will continue to watch, and we will continue to report when we find these things that are alarming, because we don't know what we are breathing in. We don't know what we're continuing to be exposed to as a community, and it has to stop. And the last and most important, Governor Moore and MDE, we need to shut this incinerator down. If it's a long history of violations, a new owner is not going to fix that. We need to shut it down. There's evidence that it cannot be contained or controlled, and that there are other ways. We're in 2024. We have to look at new ways instead of just burning and burying our waste. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for a very informative presentation. I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilman Bullock and by Councilman Torrance. I alluded to earlier, we were going to, at some point, recess this hearing to do a vote. What we're going to do is, because I want to allow for folks to ask questions, given this presentation, I'll allow one round of questions about the presentation before we go to that other hearing for our vote. And first, I'll turn it over to our sponsor, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you. My first question has to do with the monitoring alerts. Did you all receive a monitoring alert from MDE?
No, ma'am. We did not. And when we reported, when we sent the videos in and the footage in, they, we were told that there were no, they didn't know what was going on yet, but they would get back to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. Do you know of any state or federal oversight hearings of this nature that have been held or are planned to be held or have been requested to be held at the state or federal level?
RPS.
Well, there is, I believe, consideration of a bill that would look at the renewable portfolio standards and inclusion of different categories, including waste. And so that's one state-level policy that we're aware of.
I guess my question is really more, if we don't have legal authority to regulate this at the local level, you know, effectively, if we don't, you know, I don't know that we don't. But is there also state advocacy happening on this? Are the delegates and Senate representative of the 46th District and also, I would say, the state district adjacent to that, because, again, the plume area for this impacts county residents equally to city residences, are they taking this up for oversight similar to what we're doing here today?
So I believe there was a bill in Annapolis, I believe this session, that talked about community input on the permitting process for these types of facilities. Unfortunately, the bill, I believe, failed. And also, I believe there is discussion from an MDE agency perspective on how we can continue to regulate and enforce upon these bad actors within communities.
Thanks. Yeah. Reading, I mean, reading the testimony submitted in writing from Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services, you know, they're saying that they, that they self-reported things. But obviously, if you've got these black smoke events carrying on for two hours, they're capable of recognizing these events and then letting them carry on for extended periods. That would seem to be cause for concern that the state needs to impose tighter controls over how, you know, I don't know what it takes to fire up an incinerator and shut it down and how to make a burn stop at a given, you know, on a moment's notice. But it would seem that the state really needs to enact some rule that requires them to shut this down much more promptly and considers, you know, something like duration of event to be punishable the longer it goes on. I mean, there are plenty of things that we at the city level find for, where we issue a notice and say that each day that the violation continues to occur is a new violation. And there are some of them that we have penalties of $1,000, where each day is a new penalty. I would think that there's enough cause for concern here that, you know, every minute is cause for additional penalty. I just, I would hope that we have adequate attention happening to how this regulation oversight can be strengthened by the state.
Yeah. And I will also tell you, the Attorney General has just issued another violation, and I believe a criminal charge towards Curtis Bay Medical Facility for this infraction as well. So there is additional oversight, not only from MDE's perspective, but also from the Attorney General's office as well, the Environmental Crimes Unit.
And may I add another response, too? It's also based off of the community evidence and the, some of the evidence that we've shared thus far, because we've reported everything to MDE, to all the officials, to Councilwoman Porter's office and everything. And because of that, these, another lawsuit was filed by the state. So there are sanctions, and I believe they are, they can be fined up to $25,000 per violation. So again, it's based off of the community stepping up to really observe and report these events consistently. The state is, they have to, have to act. But let's, let's not forget, too, that the city ordinance that was passed, you know, you know, is what really allowed them to import more, more waste to keep their facility running, right? So it started as a city issue, so all jurisdictions, we can't, like, point fingers, right? Like, we need to all take ownership and say, well, okay, what can we do? What is within the city's purview? What is within the state's purview? Like, all jurisdictions at all levels need to be acting on this issue and really looking seriously when bad actors and polluters come forward, like, what are the cumulative impacts, right? If they can't answer that and have they worked with community? If a community is already overburdened, why put another facility there to further that environmental injustice and impact in the community?
Thank you both. You know, I've been pretty quiet through all this. I'll say, incinerators, crematoriums, the whole kit and caboodle, I think, are an issue that we truly need to resolve in the city. Given the density of our city and given the disproportionate environmental justice issues that we deal with in our city, the inadequate monitoring and policing of these issues just adds insult to injury.
Yes.
And for an incinerator like this, where we know that there are issues for them to be unaddressed, I think is unacceptable. And I appreciate the work that you guys have done, the investigative work that you've done to, you know, check it every 30 seconds. It goes a long way towards making the case that I think, right now, what we're doing is not adequate. And, you know, if we want our young kids to play out in parks and to stay healthy and to spend time outdoors, we need to make sure that they can breathe clean air outdoors. And that is not something that anybody has control over except for our government. And so this is where we have to step up and do everything in our power to make sure that, you know, we're being thoughtful about these decisions when they are made. So I appreciate you thus far. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Councilman Torres?
I just have a comment. The footage by itself is pretty, I'm going to be frank, damning, but also it speaks for itself. And I'm thankful for the Councilwoman's leadership on this, and I stand with you all in terms of just figuring out a way to get this done, because unfortunately, no one should have to look out their window and see black smoke as a regular thing. Thank you.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes, and thank you. Just reiterating Councilman Torrance's point, one thing I'll also talk about is the health disparities in the area. I think that's a very critical piece. We're talking about asthma and emphysema and those longstanding issues. And then also, as we talk about what happens inside people's homes and seeing even some of the evidence within homes. And so obviously, that affects air quality and life expectancy. So again, thank you to Councilman Porter, but also appreciate you guys doing a very thorough job as it relates to research and then also documenting, not only visually, but also in terms of the numbers. So much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, we are going to recess this. Don't go anywhere. All right, we're going to quickly recess this hearing. Don't go anywhere. You can stay right there. We have a quick voting session, which should be very quick in and out. The next bill is Council Bill 23-0465, Tree Removal on City Property Permits and Procedure for the Purpose of Establishing Certain Standards and Requirements for Authorized Tree Removal Along Certain Rights of Way, Requiring that the Department of Recreation and Parks Approve Any Tree Removal on Land Operated by the Department, Specifying the Procedure for Tree Removal Mitigation on Land Operated by the Department of Recreation and Parks, Conforming, Clarifying, and Correcting Related Provisions, Defining Certain Terms, and Generally Relating to the Removal Trees on Certain City Properties. We heard this bill a couple of months ago, I feel like, and we had one tweak to our amendments that we were going to address. We now have those amendments on all your desks. The amendments, number one, very simply, and Tyler, I don't know if you want to explain this, or I can do it, I'm indifferent.
Is this the, sorry, this is the amendment for the, who can approve the removal, right? The director or the directors designee?
I was just going to explain both amendments that we have here on the sheet.
Yeah, let me grab a copy real quick.
Sure.
So we have, Jenny, can you, or can you speak to the First Amendment, which is on the breast height? And that just clarifies what it means, which is four and a half feet off of the ground. The second one is also the caliber inch. That wasn't in the bill. Through extensive conversation, we decided that that needed to be clearly defined, so that's what that First Amendment is. The Second Amendment regards when the removal is authorized. So it is unless otherwise authorized in writing by the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks. And that makes two changes in the bill to reflect that change. So it's just stating that the director or the directors designee can authorize the removal of a tree that is dead, diseased, or dying.
Thank you. Anything you want to add, Jenny? All right. Any questions about the amendment? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the, move by Dorsey, seconded by Torrance. And we'll go to a vote. McCray is absent. Bullock?
Yes.
Conway, yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Schleifer is absent. Porter?
Yes.
And Torrance. All right. I'll entertain a motion to move the bill as amended.
Second.
I don't know who got that one. I'm going to give it to Dorsey and second to Porter. Bullock?
Yes.
Conway, yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And Torrance.
Aye.
All right, and that moves on to second reader. Thank you so much. We will reopen our initial hearing, and this is Resolution 23-0201, informational hearing on medical waste incinerators. We have another presentation from reduction in motion. Nope. Oh, please, go ahead, Councilman.
Just following up on my previous questions. We have a lot of people here. I imagine we have a lot of Curtis Bay residents here. Do we have any county Brooklyn Park residents here? Is it, does anybody here know of any similar action being taken by the residents of Brooklyn Park? Because the... Similar to what we're doing here today.
So you mean like a hearing?
Yeah, like in Baltimore County. Because here's my point, is again, back to this issue of the plume. And as noted in the testimony from Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services, the actual physical incinerator is not right in the Curtis Bay neighborhood, but it's well, the neighborhood, the whole neighborhood falls within that plume. I asked that question about the plume radius at the outset, because I've done some looking into this in years past, when we've heard issues on incinerators, and as well as more recently, when we talked about the incinerator, incineration of human remains and crematoriums. And these incinerators typically have a two to two-and-a-half-mile radius where they drop the most toxic elements from their burned waste. And all of the Curtis Bay neighborhood falls directly in that two to two-and-a-half-mile radius around the Curtis Bay Medical Waste Services facility. But so does all of the Brooklyn Park neighborhood in Baltimore County. And I would hope that Baltimore County would have a similar interest in doing what we're doing here today.
Dooley Knowley, thank you.
Excellent point. And Councilwoman, a reduction in motion? Please, introduce yourself.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the council. My name is Charlotte Wallace. I'm a nurse. I've been a nurse practicing in Maryland for the past 29 years, and I'm here today on behalf of the Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments, known as ANE. They're a global network of nurses with work on environmental injustices to protect human health. As mentioned, long-term exposure to toxic air pollutions from incineration has an impact on human health. A study that I brought with me, it's published by the Atmospheric A study that I brought with me, it's published by the Atmospheric Environment in 2013, is titled "Air Pollution and Early Deaths in the United States: Quantifying the Impact of Major Sectors in 2005." But it found that Maryland was the number one state in our nation for the highest rates of premature deaths related to long-term air pollution. The two largest contributors to particulate matter 2.5 related to premature deaths in U.S. are road transportation and power generation. And there's a quote, "The city of Baltimore in particular is characterized by the highest total mortality rate from all combustion sources. About 130 early deaths attributed to particulate matter 2.5 per year per 100,000 inhabitants," end of quote. And as mentioned earlier, there's a misconception that just because things are burned, that they disappear. Obviously, they don't. Uh, the reality, they change form. Already mentioned by Councilwoman Porter was dioxin, right? Dioxin is released when a plastic is burned. Dioxin is associated with many health conditions, known as also cancer, weakened immune system, learning disabilities, heart disease, the list can go on. I know we just got a little bit of a brief history with Dr. Thomas. I just want to give a small medical history lesson here. Um, and back in the eighties, most, many of us remember HIV was a big concern. Medical waste was found on the beaches of New Jersey. Medical Waste Tracking Act of 1988 was introduced. It was a strict federal legislation that required hospitals to list the types of medical waste to be tracked, created a cradle-to-grave tracking system, and set standards. It went into effect in only four, um, states, but all eyes were watching what was happening. It did expire in 1991. In 1992, many Maryland hospitals signed on with incineration with contracts called the Guaranteed Annual Tonnage, called the GAAP, the 20-year contracts that seemed like the best deal in town since they wanted pretty much all of their waste just to go to incineration and just disappear. Um, obviously didn't disappear. Uh, 20 years contracts, um, that they signed into. As Dr. Thomas already mentioned, in 1997, Baltimore City Council allowed the Curtis Bay Medical Waste Incinerator to start importing waste from anywhere in the U.S. and Canada, which I strongly note. In 2009, the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, now known as MDH, Maryland Department of Health, revised the definitions of what is considered special medical waste. The new definition, uh, was a game changer. It states that just not the mere presence of blood or potentially hazardous material on an item makes a regulated medical waste. Article must be contaminated with blood or other potentially infectious materials and be capable of releasing it. You know, different than our homes, we don't have red bins in our bathrooms, uh, or, you know, when I remove a child's Band-Aid from falling and scraping their knee. Uh, which allowed around 2010, Maryland hospitals, we actually were national leaders in, uh, waste reduction in general and specifically a vast reduction in our regulated medical waste. Most Maryland hospitals went from nearly 99% of our total waste being sent to local incinerator to, uh, close to their minimal amount to not be fined by the GAAP, as I mentioned. Uh, which was just under about 50% of the waste for most hospitals. Once the 20-year contracts expired, the evidence suggests that regulated medical waste should be around just 10% of a hospital's total waste stream. Uh, the Center of Disease Control, uh, puts that number more at a 3% to 5%. And I'll just note that it has to do with how many operating rooms you have, the type of operating, operations that occur, so there are variables. Hospital waste streams are very complex and expansive. Um, the Joint Commissions Environmental Care Committee under the Hazardous Material and Waste Management Plan have oversight of hospitals' hazardous waste disposal compliance, not necessarily contracts, as I believe the question was worded, but over compliance. Each decision that healthcare leadership make have a downstream impact. Leadership should promote environmentally sound and healthy alternatives to waste, medical waste incineration. Uh, just very quickly, I was asked to share some best practices of waste management, uh, in the healthcare sector, um, that have, um, an impact on public health. As mentioned, operating rooms are responsible for most of the, uh, regulated medical waste. They are 40 to 60% of a health organization's total supply cost. They also operate and produce about 30% of a total, of a hospital's total waste, which is an estimated 2/3% of the healthcare organizations' specifically regulated medical waste. Um, the best practices is rethinking the need of their products, reformulating surgical kits, close examination of operating room preference cards, pick lists to avoid unnecessary purchases, and then the waste also of disposal. Auditing, or reducing, so looking at the audit of the location size of red collection bins. Many medical facilities have actually eliminated bedside red bins, casting reduce, reducing the non, the biohazard items that were going to the incinerator. Uh, reuse, uh, single-use medical devices make up a significant amount of operating room supply budget. Transition from a single-use disposable to reusable items. There are examples, one would be Sharps containers. Uh, they used to just all just get sealed up, just send off to the incinerator. Uh, the hospitals in Maryland, 2010, saved over 120,000 in the first year, converting to reusable Sharps containers. Another example is reusable sterile containers or usable textiles. I can go into any details you guys want, but the last one I just want to highlight, it's called reprocessing, manufacturing. It's taking single-use devices, they're FDA-approved, vendors, they collect the units clean, reassemble them. They're the original manufacturer, they reassemble them. The hospital buys them back at a discounted price. It saves money in the waste stream, saves money purchasing. Uh, one hospital in Maryland, 2011, saved over $480,000 just implementing this process alone. Um, incineration, including waste to energy, is harmful to health and should be phased out. Medical waste incineration is a leading source of dioxin, mercury, lead, and other harmful pollutants that threaten human health and the environment. And I thank you all for the work that you're doing to address the needs for tighter safety regulations and considering ceasing, uh, out-of-state, um, waste coming to our, our, um, state and specifically the residents of Curtis Bay in the Baltimore city area.
Thank you. I, I, I have a number of questions. Um, you know, I've been thinking a lot about incinerators and particularly crematoriums, but a medical waste incinerator, I believe, has a broader ability for what they can and cannot burn. What can be burned in a medical waste incinerator? And what is technically not allowed to be burned in a medical waste incinerator? I don't know if you heard that question?
Yeah, I can send you, um, there's actual a state, um, I don't remember the number of it, I'm sorry, but there's a state, um, law that specifically spells it out. But it's, it's basically, um, any item that has, that could be released. So I don't want to be too graphic, but you know, if the bodily contents could be flaked off, you know, released in any way, is the short.
Uh, but it is more than bottle, body parts or?
Right, could be, um, say a needle, right?
Got it.
For a Sharps, right?
And you mentioned like, uh, the Sharps container, for instance, and, um, so for this particular facility, and, uh, in the previous, uh, presentation, you said, you said somewhere around 70% of the waste coming to this facility is from out of state, 76%. So three-quarters, uh, more than three-quarters of, of all waste is coming not from anywhere near Baltimore. Um, and when it comes to policies such as not burning your Sharps container, instead recycling it, we have no control over those policies nor influence over any of those institutions and how they think or handle their waste before they send it to the, the medical waste facility.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, all right. Um, the other question I have, um, is regarding other disposal methods. Um, you know, I, when I think about, um, solid waste generally for the city, you know, we can compost, um, we can reuse, we can recycle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, medical waste is a little bit different. Um, and so I'm curious, um, in the industry, what other methods are available for dealing with potentially, you know, biohazard materials?
Yeah, so there's something called autoclave sterilization, where it's the heat that renders it reusable again. Um, so there are other alternatives. It's very expensive, you know, there's cost to each thing.
Uh, I'm gonna simplify it for people like me who need simplification, but essentially you microwave it or something like that.
Sure.
Like hit it with a lot of heat.
Right.
So they would denature any, um, viruses or content and then, okay.
Which you've seen when you go to the dentist, right? They open up the packet with the little stripes at the top, and they open up the little packet and take out the instruments. They were probably used the day before. They went into their little autoclave, heated, microwaved, you know, as you say, um, per regulations, and then reused again.
Yeah.
And I have a follow-up question to that. Can you speak to how they're currently disposed now?
How what are?
How, how those plastic, um, uh, those plastic items?
Like the wrappers?
Yeah, those wrappers are currently disposed now.
So it depends on the hospital, um, cause the more hazardous the waste stream, the higher the cost. So the cost to go to the landfill, I'm making up numbers right now, but say four cents, it's normally 10 times more expensive to go to incineration. So as a business, right, you would want to work with your, educate them where it should go. Uh, where that wrapper should go is should it just go right into the landfill bin?
Uh, any questions from other folks on the committee? This is a question actually for the Law Department. Um, we, we talked about some of the potential solutions, including, um, policies in the past, past that restricted the ability of this facility to accept out-of-state, um, medical waste materials. Is that on the table? Is that possible? Do we have that authority to do so? Or was that some sort of agreement made with the facility that has lapsed?
I don't know of any agreements. There could be agreements, but I'm not, I'm not privy to them. Um, I'm not sure exactly what you mean by restricting. Um, you're talking about like geographical limitations from waste coming in or?
Um, and, and forgive, you know, I'll allow you, if you can explain a little more. Apparently there was some restriction, maybe law or ordinance that, um, prevented this site from accepting medical waste from outside of Baltimore.
Those, those have constitutional problems, those kind of restrictions. Unfortunately, um, they are either Commerce Clause or, um, you know, defining the lines between states as, as the, as the barriers. Could be a violation of that.
Got it, that's helpful to know. Um, I, I'm sure we'll probably talk to you a lot more behind closed doors to get more details on that, but that helps to know. Councilman Torrance?
A question for the law. Is there a way that we can create a permit process for out-of-state persons to do incineration? That way we wouldn't run afoul of the Commerce Clause?
Well, the one case that, that talked about the preemption of the clean, of the city's Clean Air Act from, from a couple of years ago was, was pretty, um, broad, broadly stated in that they, they felt that all, every aspect of regulation that the city tried to put, put in place was preempted by state law. So we, I think we'd have to get very specific about, um, what would we be permitting before we could say for sure whether it would be allowed, but...
Is there a way that we can, um, request state action for a permit for in-state and out-of-state medical facilities to get a permit? That way we're operating within the general police powers of the state as well as the city, if we're licensing?
Yeah, I don't know about, I don't, we don't license medical facilities now, to my knowledge. Um, correct me, um, health, if I'm wrong, but, um, I don't believe the city has the authority to regulate medical facilities.
Okay. Any other questions? Make sure I've got all my questions answered. One other thing, and I'm not sure if, um, for Dr. Haney and Dr. Thomas, if this was something you looked into, but do we have any sense of the pollutants that were coming out of that black, black smoke?
Yep, that's a really good question. So, um, what we, information that we have is what's already been, uh, reported uh, by the facility itself, in terms of the pollutants that it's regulated for. This includes particulate matter, carbon monoxide, hydrogen chloride, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, um, heavy metals, um, dioxins and furans. Um, so we, we, we do know, um, and particularly my colleague over here has also, um, provided information about the kinds of, uh, contaminants that are released into the air. Um, and that's part of what this facility, um, self-reports on a routine basis to the state and is available publicly. But as far as additional characterization of air pollutants, that's something I think that came up earlier, um, in terms of the importance of that, to understand the exposure, the adverse exposure and public health implications.
Awesome, thank you. Any further questions? All right, uh, we are going to, um, open up to, uh, testimony. For those who are in attendance, virtually, please use the raise hand function and we will identify you, uh, to testify. We are going to afford you two minutes each. First... Okay, uh, and for our hospital systems, we'll afford you three minutes. So I, my understanding is we have Johns Hopkins and MedStar? Is, is, are those the only folks we have here today? Okay, um, we'll allow you guys to go first if you'd like. Yep, you're welcome to come up and testify. You've got three minutes. Uh, please press the button on the right and it should light up red.
Well, good morning, councilmembers. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to participate in this informational hearing, uh, on medical waste, and thank you, Councilman Porter, for your leadership on this important issue. My name is Bob McLean. I am Vice President of Facilities for Johns Hopkins University. Johns Hopkins Hospital, Bayview Medical Center, and Johns Hopkins University are committed to sustainability and are engaged in a broad range of sustainability measures across the institution. This includes efforts to reduce waste and maximize waste diversion. Accounting for the community impacts of our operational decisions is something we take very seriously. And during the university's recent climate action and sustainability plan development process, the university established a community advisory group to provide input from Baltimore city residents and leaders on a number of community and environmental justice issues. This advisory group helped shape the plan's vision, focus on advancing healthy, just, and sustainable environmental environments in our communities and around the world. Members of this group also include representatives from South Baltimore who helped shape their goals, focusing on developing pathways to zero waste. We've also worked with members of the South Baltimore community to support funding and benefits for a regional compost facility. And we're one of five regional universities to sign a letter of support to the Department of Public Works in April of 2022, which contributed to the $4 million in funding the city of Baltimore received from the Environmental Protection Agency. Additionally, members of the university and its health system participate actively in many regional committees and organizations committed to advancing sustainability and waste reduction at the regional scale, including the newly formed Baltimore City Zero Waste Coalition led by the Department of Public Works. Like others, we were upset and disappointed to learn about the actions of the Curtis Bay Energy staff that led to the original guilty plea in October and equally alarmed by the most recent lawsuit. This is certainly not what we expect from companies we do business with, and it has been a great catalyst for many internal conversations. Let me repeat that, many internal conversations, uh, as we look to maximize our medical waste diversion from incineration facilities. Since learning about the Curtis Bay Energy guilty plea, the Johns Hopkins Health System University have undertaken a thorough review of all of our medical waste contracts, practices, and data, engaging staff in sustainability, facilities management, health and safety, legal, and others. This process has helped us reflect on how much medical waste is being managed across our institution, how much of our waste is being diverted from facilities like Curtis Bay Energy, and what downstream treatment options and impacts for different types of medical waste there are that we just talked about. In total, significantly less than 1% of all medical waste generated by Johns Hopkins Health System at the Johns Hopkins Hospital and Bayview Medical Center is currently sent to Curtis Bay Energy for incineration. And this small fraction can be diverted to other types of treatment facilities, which we're in the process of coordinating. We are proud to say that the vast majority of the health system's medical waste stream is managed through other technologies and vendors. As a university, we generate limited medical waste, and JC's overall medical waste stream has declined by nearly 20% since tracking began in 2008. While portions of the university's medical waste are sent to Curtis Bay Energy, about 27% of our total medical waste stream, we have assessed that nearly all of this material can be diverted to alternative facilities and technologies. Although there are certain components of medical waste that still requires incineration under legal compliance, uh, we anticipate that we can divert and treat using other technologies, all but 1% of our medical waste from incineration at Curtis Bay. And we're committed to exploring options for this remaining amount. We are confident that this process can be completed quickly in the next 30 to 60 days. We're also engaged in conversations to integrate requirements in future contracts that will alert us of non-compliance issues so that we can act proactively responding in the future. So on behalf of Johns Hopkins University and Health System, I want to express my gratitude for the council's work to advocate for sustainability, public health, and environmental justice. These are a core part of our institution's priorities, and we look forward to continuing to work with the city and community partners on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I was gonna cut you off, but then you were saying some things I wanted to hear. So, I think we all want to hear that. Yeah, I appreciate it so much, thank you. Please. Please.
Good morning, council members. I'm Rachel DeMunda and I serve as the Corporate Director of Environmental Health and Safety and Sustainability for MedStar Health. I have over 32 years working in this field and waste management is an area of expertise for me. I'm speaking on behalf of MedStar Health, who is the largest healthcare provider in Maryland with over seven hospitals and several hundred ambulatory centers. Three of our hospitals reside in Baltimore City. That would be Union Memorial, Good Samaritan and Harbor, along with approximately 15 MedStar ambulatory facilities. MedStar is a new customer of Curtis Bay. They will be providing medical waste sharps and non-regulated pharmaceutical waste disposal services for us. MedStar is aware of Curtis Bay's investigation and violations from 2019 and 2020 and the recent self-reported air violations. After careful consideration, MedStar determined that Curtis Bay, under new ownership, with commitments to capital for improvements in technology and processes and supplemental environmental projects, responded satisfactorily to their violations. Thus, MedStar decided to move forward with their contractual agreement with Curtis Bay for medical waste disposal services. MedStar will do their due diligence in monitoring Curtis Bay's environmental regulatory compliance moving forward. Healthcare is a rapidly growing industry and is subsequently generating more waste, particularly with the transition to disposable products. To help reduce hospital-acquired infections, the CDC states that approximately 3% of hospital waste is truly infectious and must be disposed of as medical waste. This percentage represents an average across all types of hospitals and will vary based on the types of waste generating operations within the hospital. Thus, it's not feasible for hospitals to completely eliminate medical waste. We can only reduce it to a certain degree and only a small percent of medical waste can be diverted through reprocessing technologies. Medical waste can be further reduced by diverting it to the municipal solid waste stream. Medical waste is MedStar's most expensive waste stream to manage, comprising over half of our $3.5 million waste budget. Thus, we are incentivized to reduce this waste stream, which has been a priority focus for several years. Improving waste management is just one of several initiatives that comprises MedStar's longstanding sustainability program, and we have been very successful in reducing our medical waste to approximately 11% across the health system. Our goal is 8%, which some of our hospitals are already below this mark. A major challenge for hospitals is that there is a lack of greener medical waste disposal methods on a large scale due to cost, access and feasibility. Despite innovations in disposal technologies, there is no scalable global green solution at present. Thus, MedStar is limited to two options for medical waste, autoclave and incineration, which each have an environmental impact. Incineration is required for pathological waste, that's body parts, trace chemotherapy waste and pharmaceutical waste. Thus, incineration is a necessary waste treatment technology for hospitals. Having a local waste incineration provider is beneficial from a logistics and cost perspective and reduces our Scope III carbon emissions associated with waste that would otherwise be transported out of state. To conclude, I ask that if the council is considering any legislation that will impact hospital management of medical waste, that you work closely with hospital stakeholders and waste experts who understand this large, complex and costly waste stream. Thank you. And we did prepare and submit a written response to the resolution as well.
Thank you. That helps a lot to understand. All right, we are going to go to, we're going to go to Gwen DeBois or DeBois. Thank you, Gwen. You've got two minutes.
Okay, if I press?
Oh, you just turned it off.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Dr. Gwen DeBois. I have a degree in medicine and also public health and I'm President of Chesapeake Physicians for Social Responsibility. And we have been working for decades against incineration. It is last century's technology and autoclave represents what is standard of care now. Now, when you see that black smoke, I'm sure it's full of particulate matter. And particulate matter is the deadliest of the common criteria air pollutants. It increases cardiovascular mortality, it increases respiratory mortality, it increases all-cause mortality, it is a cause of lung cancer, and it doesn't have to be. We heard in the last century, people were trying to get rid of those injections, the syringes on the beaches in New Jersey. Okay, we don't need to do that anymore. In fact, particulate matter increased the likelihood, there was evidence associating particulate matter with COVID infections. It is a public health no-no to incinerate and we don't need to do it anymore. And the environmental injustice of it is overwhelming. The city of Baltimore, in the, I think it was the 90s, increased the catchment area. So if it increased it, it can decrease it. And there's no reason for the city of Baltimore to help keep this company afloat if it's harming the citizens of Baltimore. There is an alternative. We don't need it. We don't use last century technology in other areas, especially when it impacts public health. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gwen. We've got Bob McLean up next. Oh, I'm sorry. Next up, we've got David Jones.
How you guys doing? I'm a resident of Curtis Bay. I've lived in Curtis Bay for 35 years. As you can tell by my voice, I'm sick. I have long COVID. So I've never dealt with a health issue like this and it's hard enough to breathe in my community. And to deal with this on a daily basis now is a fight. And we, as a community, have been impacted by these things for generations and it needs to stop. We're not asking for the world here, okay? The gentleman that was sitting over there, councilman, said, you know, are we doing things in other communities to get these things taken care of? We're not worried about the other communities, okay? We don't live in those communities. We do care about those people, but we care what affects us. And yes, we try everything we can. I try to talk to our governor. I try to talk to our mayor. I try to talk to everyone. We're here today to ask you guys to repeal what you did to allow more medical waste into our community. That's what we're asking. That's the first step. The rest will be worked out. We can't get anyone to help us. I call MDE daily. They do nothing. All we get is them filibustering us all the time. Literally, daily, people call in. We don't know what to do as a community anymore. We just don't. We feel like no one cares about us. All I'm asking is for you guys to do your jobs. That's it. Everyone keeps pointing fingers at everyone else and saying it's not their job or they don't know what to do. Figure it out. It is your job, as we elected you, to do your job for us to keep us healthy, have public health and safety, among other things. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'll make this quick note. I think certainly the sponsor and myself, all my colleagues here have been working really hard on this stuff. And I think what you find as you begin to dig into this stuff is it's not so simple as just passing an easy law. There's some laws that we literally don't have the authority to pass. And that's why I asked that one question regarding whether or not we could ban out-of-state stuff. And so.
Sir, all you're doing is repealing something that you put in the process to allow. That's all you're doing.
So your time is up and so I don't want to be, it's hard for folks to hear, so what you're saying no one else on the thing can say. But I do want to just be very clear that there are limitations to what we can do and we are actively working, which is why we are having this meeting, to figure out what we can do. And so I appreciate your testimony. I feel your frustration and I share your frustration and I am working very hard with the sponsor here today to figure out what we can and will do to address these concerns. I want to go next to Tiffany Thompson.
Hi, good morning. I actually prepared something, but after hearing all of the testimony, it's, it's hard. It's hard, one, because I live in the Curtis Bay community. I grew up in an adjacent community in Cherry Hill. I taught in Curtis Bay back in the early 2000s where the young people that I taught, three and four-year-olds, had asthma, severe asthma. It wasn't genetic, it was environmental. And you all see the black smoke. You don't smell what we smell on a daily basis. Call it MDE is, I might as well call my neighbor because they're passing the blame. Call this person, call that person. Why are you calling me? No, we can't give you a report. We already heard it. Call the fire department, call it. It's not helping. And what Davis said, city council passed the bill in 1997 to allow out-of-state transport. That can be reversed. If you pass it, you can reverse it. It's just, it's very unacceptable. I've talked to people as late as this past week and I talked to a guy who said, I didn't have asthma until I moved near here. And he lives in Baltimore County, a little past Brooklyn Park. He's lost three dogs to cancer. He cried on my steps telling me, showing me the pictures of his dogs on their last days. I have a dog. My dog has had issues since we got him. We experience so much of this stuff, like they say, what goes up comes down. We try, I mean, trying to grow your own vegetables, even barbecuing in your backyard, it's hard because you're consuming what's in the air. It's, and the fines, $1,000 a day, 25,000, that's nothing to a billion-dollar corporation. And I'm saddened by MedStar, one of my facilities I take my family to. I mean, it's profitable with people and it's unfair. It's unjust. And the government is supposed to protect us?
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next up, I've got Greg Sawtell. It's you, Greg.
Hello, everybody. I'm Greg Sawtell with the Community of Curtis Bay Association, South Baltimore Community Land Trust. I had some thoughts prepared. I wasn't expecting, I don't think we were expecting to hear What's a Surprise and a Shock, which is the local hospital that's actually engaging in a community health and sustainability process in South Baltimore neighborhoods and considers itself a partner, would announce to us by surprise, without any communication, at least with the Community of Curtis Bay Association or Land Trust, that they've already analyzed the situation and have decided, we don't know the contract term, but is okay with what's going on at the medical waste incinerator, to the extent that they're willing to put more money towards it. And prior to that, we heard another hospital representative, a university at Johns Hopkins, saying, we're actually going in the other direction. So I think that clarifies that there are choices to be made and the way we need to evaluate what happens next is by the choices that people make with their dollars, okay, and with their institutional resources. We've got university academics who are partnering with community. Community is taking responsibility for this issue. We were at, youth leader and I were at the facility this morning. We actually went inside. There was another black smoke incident that we captured on film on the 19th yesterday. Today's the 20th. So they're continuing to do this. We have hospitals, this is a moment of clarifying. We're going to have, we're at a turning point and it's for community. The community's made up its mind. We can't live with this anymore. City council has a choice in front of you. We need to evaluate the options, but we firmly believe that a choice can be made to go back, not to do something new, but to go back. Sometimes what we used to be doing was better and in this case, it's certainly better to go back prior to 1997, before the company exerted its influence and got a change of law, okay, to allow waste to flow in from anywhere, through loopholes. We think we can go back. We'll respectfully work together to investigate that and put all the capacity we have towards supporting accurate information about that. We don't think it's appropriate to give quick responses with the research not having been done. And finally, it's a choice for our hospitals because others haven't spoken. Are you going to take the side of saying it's okay what you saw today with the black smoke and the ongoing pollution? Or are you going to say we can do better and we will do better? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. Next up, we have Carlos Sanchez.
Good afternoon. Like my colleague said earlier today, we went to drop off a letter, simply just dropping off the letter, saying that South Baltimore Youth Leaders, Representative of South Baltimore, we have dropped off a letter saying that I'm taking moral site control of 3200 Hawkins Point Road, Baltimore, Maryland 21226. And that's just simply to state, you know, the students, the community are taking the role on collecting this data and making it public to the communities. And just really quick, I want to read off the letter that we just simply left off at the medical waste incinerator. Doctor, dear, sorry, dear Mr. Moley and Ms. Lewis, we youth leaders in South Baltimore are waiting to you as the neighbors of the Curtis Bay Medical Waste Incinerator. This letter serves as notice that we have taken moral site control of 3200 Hawkins Point Road, Baltimore, Maryland 2126, following your repeated violation of laws designed to protect our health and environment. While we recognize that you retain legal ownership of the land, your abuse of this land means you have forfeited any moral claim to it. Furthermore, your operating have breached principles of environmental justice, the basic dignity of your neighbors and workers and their fundamental human right. Our community has borne witness to the detrimental impacts of the incinerator's operations for far too long. We, the youth of South Baltimore, will not allow the past three decades of violations to continue. Taking moral site control is a declaration of our commitment to safeguarding our community's health, dignity and right through ongoing monitoring and notification of fellow residents. We will now intensify our efforts following our observation of dozen of instances of toxic black smoke at your facility since January 26, 2024. We will continue to stand against a history of neglect and harm that you are perpetuating and that can no longer be tolerated. As youth and residents of South Baltimore, we love our community and proudly assert our right to live in a safe, safe, healthy and dignified environment. Your routine emission of thick, black, uncontrolled toxic smoke into the air we breathe making unmistakably clear that you place no value on our lives or those of your workers. Thank you.
Thank you. And last here on this list is Nicole Fabrikant.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I've been working in South Baltimore for 13 years now. You've seen me a lot at these city council meetings and I plan to continue to come until we actually do something. We have been engaged in teaching young people to study, to document, along with Hopkins, the injustices in their community. When we asked the class, how many of you have respiratory illnesses? Every single person raises their hand in a classroom of about 35 to 40 students. It has gotten so bad that sports teams, like the volleyball team, can't even play anymore because they don't have enough healthy players. So we are demanding that our city council do something. You do have power. We understand the kind of power that you had to pass a law to allow states to export or import their garbage from all over the country. We can reverse that law. We also demand that you pressure Governor Moore at a state level to actually take a stand. We have seen him come down and, you know, presented himself with all sorts of photo opportunities in front of CSX, which is another one of the 70-plus facilities that's polluting that community. We won't stand for it. One thing MedStar did not say is they're cutting corners. This is about their own profit margins. And if we don't say that, if we don't say they are looking for cheap ways to get rid of their medical waste, then we don't have a backbone. So we're asking city council, please stand up, do the right thing and pass legislation to actually allow this community to continue to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else listed here to testify and I don't see anyone with their hand raised. I'll give another five seconds. For those that are joining us virtually, if you wish to testify, please use the raise hand function. All right, that concludes our public testimony. I'll turn it over. Wait, we want to vote this out. Yes. With that, I'll entertain a motion to move the resolution favorably. Moved by Porter, seconded by Torrance. Bullock. Conway, yes. Dorsey is absent. Schleifer absent, Porter and Torrance. All right, this will move forward for a second reader. Thank you. Councilwoman, any closing statements?
I think everything that was shared today by community members are things that we, as the city council members, have to ruminate on. I believe that just hearing today's testimony from hospital institutions, as a public health practitioner, I'm very disappointed. I'm still taking it all in, but I give you my word that we will do everything that we can within the legal jurisdiction that we have in order to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I'll just add addition to that, just, you know, this is an issue amongst many, certainly in the Curtis Bay area, that we've been paying very close attention to and trying to figure out how we can thread the needle and address these issues. I won't lie to you, these are not simple issues to resolve. We, as a council, don't have, you know, some magical authority to pass laws that conflict with federal laws, and so we're gonna try to be creative and figure out what we can do to at least make sure that they are meeting the standards that they agreed to, and if there are more creative ways to limit, I think that's something we will certainly consider. So look forward to working with the sponsor to figure out what we can do, and I appreciate all the testimony here today, and please, keep coming back. You know, it's really important that we continue to hear from you, because people's lives are on the line, so, thank you. This hearing is adjourned.